My meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. We'll start with public and select board information. I'll start with the board first. Anyone have anything newsworthy?
I do. But if somebody has something before me, they are more than welcome to go first.
Go ahead Suzanne.
The Conservation Commission passed their updated definitions from their public hearing last week. And then also, I forgot, this was the first thing on the agenda. So there's going to be some work at Wiley Park and some fencing that's gonna maybe go up where people are maybe launching kayaks where they shouldn't be. And I think that's my very abridged version, my very short update of what Karen told me.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Jamie had something?
Yes, I wanted to welcome Robert Brunz to the board.
Thank you.
Yay.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, we're excited that he's here. This will be the first meeting.
It's Bob.
Bob. And yeah, just wanted to welcome you to the board.
Appreciate that.
Jerry, anything?
I'm good.
All right, Bob, did you have anything?
Not yet.
All right. All right, anything from the public? That's not on the agenda. Let's see any hands? All right, we'll start with our public hearing. We have a poll hearing.
Right. Now I'll read the notice of public hearing. A select board public hearing will be held on Monday, June 3rd, 2024, at 5:30 PM in the Earl Mountain Meeting Room at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway, and by remote participation regarding Plan MA 2024-35 dated April 25th, 2024, from Verizon New England Incorporated and Eversource Energy, who request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting features to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways, Massasoit Road, and to place one jointly-owned pole, 36/1069.5, on Massasoit Road.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing. Do we have someone from either Verizon or Eversource? All right. Please, either one, whenever you're more comfortable.
Good afternoon, Tom Stanton Pike Electric for Verizon. This was an Eversource request for a pole. Two reasons, the span was over 200 feet between the two poles. And eventually it's going to feed a pole across the street. So that was the reason for the new pole.
All right, did we have any comments or questions from Ms. Kayla?
I ran it past Adam, Dan, Kim, and Alex, and there was no concerns.
And Noah Butters said anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Noah Butter problems.
All right, anything from the board? Any questions?
I think so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll close the public hearing portion of this, and then we'll discuss and vote. He's across the street.
Yeah, that's what I was like.
All right, if no one has anything, we can...
I have a motion to approve the...
The new pole?
The new pole at Massasoit Road, the new pole number 36/1069.5.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye. Five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question on that. So there's, in the packet, there's a whole bunch of documents that need to be signed for us to be able to move forward. So is that something that I can either leave with or pick up tomorrow?
I think we have them. Do we have them to sign?
We usually have them.
It's in the packet.
Yeah, so we'll sign them and have them in the morning for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda, we're relinquishing aquaculture site Christopher Viprino.
There was no added statement from the...
No.
...research office. Okay, great.
I move we accept the, that we relinquished the aquaculture site to Christopher Viprino, B2.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Do we know why? He just decided not to continue? Okay.
So then the next person on the list will come up?
Yep.
Great.
They'll come up and we'll get another...
Applicant.
Another vote, yeah.
Wonderful, yay. That's great.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye. Five to zero. It's hard throwing a new name in there. Sorry, Bob, if I hesitate a little bit. I'm looking right at everybody to make sure I don't, I don't get it wrong. Because before it was, you know, Amy, Art, Jackie.
Just don't call me Art.
Jerry, I won't do that. I won't do that. All right, committee appointments. We have Douglas Byrd for the zoning board of appeals and Jared Carey, zoning board of appeals. And I believe these are both alternates that are moving up to pole positions.
Yeah, I could just chime in. These are, I got a chance to interview these gentlemen, and they were really great. We were lucky to get them.
Oh, great.
Awesome. All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Or we need a motion. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jamie, you can do it.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve committee appointments Douglas Byrd and Jared Carey to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye. Five to zero.
So that means we have only one alternate left.
Correct, so...
So we have to look for another alternate, at least.
Tiffany, we're almost done. So reorganization. So I have been acting chair in Art's absence. I would like to continue if that's the will of the board. I've only talked to Jerry about it, but no other...
I'll nominate Amy to be chair of the select board.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
I would be very excited to have you as chair.
All right, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye.
Yay.
Thank you. So now we need a vice chair and a clerk. That's...
I don't mind being the vice chair.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I think that would be lovely to have someone new.
All right, how about I'll nominate Jerry for vice chair. And Suzanne, would you be willing to be clerk?
Yes, I'm maybe still a little unsure what the clerk does, but sure, yeah.
I know we had talked about, you know, shifting the meetings a little bit later in the month, because the first and third, I know, is a problem for you. But in looking at the calendar coming up, they're mostly the, yeah, there's a lot of them that are the second and the...
Yeah.
Right? The second and the, yeah. So we can talk about that further, too. But was that, sounded all right to you?
Yeah, I'm just not sure what, what we do.
It's heavy, heavy lifting, Suzanne. Once in a while, you have to sign your name on to some things.
On a poll hearing, actually.
Yeah, on a poll, yes.
We were clerk when we voted on that.
We were clerk, so I have to sign, yes, it's just, that's really what it is. And if both Suzanne and the vice, I mean, not Suzanne, Amy and the vice chair are gone, you get to sit to be the chair.
And when we borrow money, you have special duties in that, too.
So we're going to get Suzanne as a stamp. Oh, that's another thing, yeah, signature stamps.
I have one already, still.
We need to get your signature on a stamp, so a lot of the things like for, you know, licensing, some of the licenses.
So just to be perfectly clear, we would never sign your name or stamp your name without two things occurring. One is you've either voted yes in a board setting, or you have given specific permission for Kayla to stamp.
Sounds good.
All right, so we have, I guess I nominated Suzanne and Jerry clerk and vice chair.
Second.
All right, any more discussion on that? All right, we'll vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye. All right.
What's that?
Town manager report. Oh, wait, liaison list.
Yeah.
And we wanted to go over the calendar just briefly.
Yeah, on the liaison list, I've been temporarily doing the finance committee due to...
Art.
Art's law, loss of art. And I, I think I probably still fit there. I've been away being the chair of it long enough that I don't think that I interfere too much anymore.
All right, so you want to take finance committee?
I can take, I can do finance.
I guess it's, no. So Bob, you can kind of see what we've had in the past, what Art had. And, I mean, do generally his committees sound, are things that you'd take, or...
I would, I would enjoy doing the zoning board and the planning board. I don't know about the strategic planning committee. That's the only one that I'm a little fuzzy on. If somebody wants to switch, switch that one around, I'd be happy about that.
Okay. Jamie?
Also, I've been doing the planning board temporarily. Yeah, and I was thinking maybe, yeah, okay, if that works, I'd like to keep that one. But yeah, I think ZBA makes sense definitely for you. Maybe, what would be easier? Go ahead, go ahead Suzanne.
Go ahead Suzanne.
Oh, I have, well, I guess we're basically discussing Art's assignments.
Right.
And I had strategic planning, and Karen is the chair, and I'm in fairly regular contact with her, although I can't ever really attend the meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of true for most of the meetings.
I mean, it's not a full requirement that you go to their meeting. I mean, that would be...
Yeah, I think all our meetings are, you know, available.
Right.
It's more for interviews and things.
Right.
You know, working with the search committee.
Could swap it if, and, yeah.
So you'd take, you'd take strategic? But then you'd want to give something else up, maybe? Bob, do any of Suzanne's look...
Well, I would wait for her. I would wait for Suzanne to, to...
Cough one up?
Yeah, propose that.
I mean, again, I was on Concom, and Karen's the chair. So I would probably keep that one. Tea time is on pause. I don't know if the taxation aid committee meets. And they do, oh, well.
Maybe that would be a good one, then?
Do you want the taxation aid?
That's fine Suzanne, if that's, if that's what you're proposing, it's fine.
Yeah, sure.
So Bob will do taxation, Suzanne will do strategic planning, Jamie will do planning. And that, that sort of susses out the rest, and you'll do finance. And then we have, the only other ones are the capital projects, but that's changed now, because we have the new capital projects. And Art was the overall liaison to the new capital projects committee, so we do have that one, too.
Is that, I mean, oh, sorry. Just to be clear, that, that one, I think, is going to be a lot of wastewater. So we're starting up that huge project, so I think that's going to be the most significant capital project that we will have going into this next year.
When do they meet?
They have been meeting in the late afternoon on Tuesdays, like the second Tuesday?
Yeah, it's the second Tuesday of the month, but we're moving it to the third. It's basically a Tuesday that works for everyone.
And it's new, so the whole format of it is new. So what we've been doing is meeting monthly, but I envisioned it, the charge says quarterly unless needed, so we had envisioned it less frequently, but probably for the first part of wastewater, it'll stay monthly or every other month, I would think. And it's a two-hour meeting, three, so three to five, one Tuesday a month.
I definitely can't attend. That would work.
Anyone?
And you can, you know, you can like...
Any takers?
Yeah.
Now, if we don't want to, we don't necessarily need one to be at that meeting every time. Again, you're a liaison...
Yeah, you just stay in touch with the chair usually.
For interviews and, and things like that.
Being retired, I guess three to five, I can probably, probably try and make some of them if not seeing them, okay? So we'll add that one.
All right, thank you Jerry.
Yeah, that one, especially moving into wastewater, seems somewhat important to...
Somewhat important.
Yeah, you're not a voting member, but...
Just a little bit, yeah.
It seems important to have somebody there more frequently.
One thing I did, I did speak to the new chair of the search committee, Katie Paradise.
Oh, yeah, she's great.
And she just wanted me to convey that we have Bob, the new member, and, I know we had talked about this years ago, Jamie, about making sure the search committee has your current contact information and what's best for you. Because like I had someone...
Cell phone, email.
Yes, whether it's cell phone...
Is the best way to contact you.
Best way to contact you. So really, if you can let the search committee know what your preferred method of contact is, whether it's email, or, or texting, or, or a call, whatever. And I also asked her if they could do something like doodle poll, so I don't get like 15 emails about scheduling one meeting, because I've had that with some of the people. And it's, yeah, it's cumbersome that way. Because they're like, oh, they had it all set, and then nope, so-and-so can't do it, so we're going to move it. It's like, oh, dear God. So yeah, hopefully they'll start using doodle poll or something. All right, is that it for...
Yeah, I think we got it.
Reorganized? We got everything?
And, Jack, you want to talk about the meeting?
Our committee assignments? And then we have the meeting calendar?
Actually, Kayla wanted to, I think. Basically, we've laid it out, and we just want you to take a look at it and tell us, because we have changed some of the dates because of holidays. And I think one because of school vacation week, right?
Yeah, so like July, we were supposed to meet the first and the 15th, but meeting the week of 4th of July, I figured if we can, we push it off.
Okay.
And then September is the same thing, because it's Labor Day.
Right.
How would everyone feel about moving the August ones later? Like to the 12th and the 26th? Just so we get a longer break, kind of in the...
Yeah.
End of July, beginning of August.
I like that.
I have a bunch of family coming.
I'm into it. It's one more month that wouldn't directly conflict with work.
12.
Yeah, and then that would move it to the, the second and the fourth Tuesday, or Monday also.
Yeah, for August.
Yeah.
Yeah, for September, yeah, September would be the second.
September also.
Two weeks off, yeah. What are you saying for September?
September means the same.
It's already the, the second Tuesday.
So it's the 23rd.
I might miss some meetings, September, October, November window.
You might, because there might be something happening.
Right, I know I definitely can't make the September one, because I will be in Iceland.
Wow.
And then...
Tough to zoom from there.
November 4th, I won't be able to go to either, because that's the day after.
Okay, we can forgive you.
All right.
Just as we get closer to those meetings, remind Kayla in case we can jockey some important things around.
Because I feel like sometimes in November, that's when we have some important stuff.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, great. All right, town manager report.
First of all, I wanted to thank everyone for their patience on the new Ocean Beach sticker issue. I know the rec department is doing their best to try and make it manageable for folks, but it is free. The Seashore requested that we have one proof of residency, so we decided to just do a free Ocean Beach sticker, because of course, not everyone wants to buy a Bay Beach sticker. So you can pick up the sticker, you can pick up the free sticker at the sticker office Thursdays through Monday, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday between 9:00 and 3:00. Or if you've already done a sticker by mail for your beach sticker, and you, and you would like the free Ocean Beach sticker as well, just call the rec department line, and they will mail you out a sticker. And none of the stickers, our sticker season starts on the 22nd, so we still have a couple of weeks.
And even if you don't want a beach sticker, a town beach sticker, or a transfer station sticker, you can still get one, but you have to qualify. It's not like you can just get one. Still has your license plate on it, and you still have to show your registration. I'll adjust, okay.
Let me just scan...
Another important thing they've been getting is that they're only issuing them to taxpayers, they're not doing the wave. So like you can't wave your sticker to somebody else to get the Seashore one.
Got it, got it.
We do have a lot of criteria. And I just wanted to just remind you, we're going to be talking about the strategic plan. It is in, the new strategic plan is almost ready. It's in the, you know, final stages, and so the strategic planning committee will be coming to you with that. We're tentatively scheduling it for July 22nd. Jim Fitzgerald from Environmental Partners Group wants to talk to you about Route 6. So we're trying to schedule that as well. And there was something else. Oh, on the water project, we were going to have Wes and Jackie Tepper from Environmental Partners Group as well come in and talk about, sort of, we're at the end of our 10-year construction project, so we have roughly eight months left, the final couple of contracts. So they'll talk about that and our issues with the permits in the Seashore, and what that means, and what we might be able to do or not do at a later date. So just wanted to let you know that those things are happening. Oh, and very important, our fire chief, Dan Keen, is retiring after a very long career. Not long enough with us, but certainly a long career. And one of Dan's hallmarks is, Dan was really almost critically injured at a, at a house fire. He fell through the roof when he was a younger firefighter, and he was out on sick leave for over a year and came back to be an active firefighter again. So it's a, it's kind of an amazing career that he's had, going all the way from almost losing his life to coming back and ending up as our chief.
Kent had a similar...
Yeah, Kent had a car accident.
Kent had a similar.
No, Kent had a similar with a ladder truck.
Yeah, but he didn't, he didn't actually fall through the roof. So I hope Dan won't mind me sharing you that. I just think it's remarkable. You know, we have a lot of great...
Dedicated.
Yes, that shows a lot of character.
So what's the timeline for...
He is, he's leaving in the first part of September, right around Labor Day. And of course, you know, we have Deputy Albino is in charge and in great shape, and of course, she's only been with us for, I don't know, 35 years now. So I think she can handle it, but we haven't even started to talk about the process yet, but we'll bring that to you as well.
All right, great.
Rich and I need to chat about that one.
I see in our packet here, this, the paint stewardship legislation.
So we just added that in as other correspondence. That's Rich's item, and same with the EV charging stations, he just wanted to talk about for our next meeting.
Oh, got it. We'll talk about it, I guess.
Which ones?
He's becoming the paint steward champion.
Paint stewardship, and then the EV charging.
Sure. So Tom Irwin, I believe is his name, from Dalton, he's on, involved in local government out in Western Mass. I was making the rounds down eastern Massachusetts in Cape Cod, and came in, and he got me. I saw him wandering around, and asked if I could help him, and then I could. So we chatted for a while, and he's a proponent of paint stewardship, which is, you know, I know we hold hazardous household waste days a couple times a year between Orleans and Eastham, and we can dispose of those on those days. But, you know, apparently this is an issue across the state, where people illegally dispose of paint absent those days, or perhaps put a can in a bag and throw it into the, at the transfer station. And so there's an initiative to move forward with this paint stewardship legislation, which the proposed legislation is the second page of this packet of materials. It's a House bill and going through committee at the moment. He's attached some information. There was a forum, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension through the county, has been a participant and is supportive of this. They held a recent forum a week or so ago to talk about it. And what the ask here is for your support in writing a letter to push the legisla...
Support it, yeah.
Legislators to support the bill. Then he has some information here regarding the pros and cons, you know, what are the concerns of some of the opponents of it. I did suggest to him that he would, you know, one of the questions that you'll like, he would likely get, or the select board would ask, would be, have you talked to the local retailers? So he in fact did, after our meeting, went down and talked to the folks at ACE. And reported back, I haven't spoken to them, but that they weren't opposed to it. But what it is, it does charge a surtax on sales of paint that everybody pays, and apparently there's a nonprofit organization that coordinates this paint stewardship program and picks up at participating retailers, where it's voluntary for them to be in the program or not. So, you know, I haven't done enough research to advocate one way or the other, other than, you know, speaking with Mr. Irwin. But he does have, one of the final pages in here is about 60 municipalities, I think it is, that have lent their support. And I let him know that we would include it in your agenda, and if you're not comfortable taking a vote, I let him know that, you know, maybe you would reconsider at your next meeting in advance of the deadline. Usually legislative session ends on July 31st, so we still have a little bit of time. And he'd be willing to, you know, attend your next meeting via Zoom if he had any questions for him.
Okay, yeah, I would, I think I'd be more comfortable next meeting, just in that. If anyone has any concerns from the community or wants to...
Because it would be a 50 cent, 50 cents a gallon across Massachusetts add-on, which would be kind of a tax per gallon that would fund this, in similar, similar to the five cent, in some ways, the five cent bottle.
Bigger can, so.
Or can, yeah, right.
I mean, I will say, anything that will keep things like this out of our waste stream is beneficial. I understand that Massachusetts is very highly regulated, you know, we just have the textile thing, and people are tired of it. But honestly, this one, not a lot of people save their paint cans for once a year. I mean, some of us do, but, you know, not everyone does.
Well, the latex, you can just dry it out.
Latex, they should just dry it out and throw it out. I mean, that's what I was told. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Do you know, will this impact like with art supplies as well? You know, this is talking about gallons and things like that, but when you're talking about oil, when I think of oil paints, I think of...
That wasn't my understanding, but that is a good question.
There was something in here about here.
I couldn't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it, but I also did not go through with a fine-toothed comb.
Oh, so yeah, it goes through...
It says art and craft, if you look, oof.
Art and craft paints.
Paints are not...
Not on the list.
On it, non-paint care products aren't on it. Paint thinner, but art and craft paints.
Or is asphalt.
These products do not have a fee when purchased and are not accepted at drop-offs. And see, to me, like, paint thinners, mineral spirits, solvents, all of those things, to me, make more...
No, no, that's not accepted at the paint drop-off sites.
Yeah, right.
Hazardous waste, it definitely is.
Oh, you can at hazardous waste day, though?
Yeah, so, and we have four, just for Bob's edification, we have four hazardous waste days a year. The towns revolve that, so you only have to keep something for three months.
So then, would these gallons be accepted at hazardous waste also already?
Still, yes, unless the law prohibits it.
Oil, oil would be probably, but not latex. Latex never has been.
Right, but this is only affecting oil, so it's already accepted at hazardous waste day, so why would we push for a tax to be added on to something that's already, has an opportunity to be responsibly disposed of?
Well, that's the question.
Yeah, it's a question, it does apply to latex.
And...
It does apply to...
It's also, it's a convenience, too, to be able to throw it out. Just to do this in Connecticut, we bring it down to Ridgefield Supply, and they would take the paint back. And I had no idea, I was probably paying for that with every gallon.
Oh, absolutely.
$60 a gallon, another 50 cents, it's pretty much hidden.
Okay, well...
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, and I guess I'd too, I mean, it'd be nice if contractors are listening, too, and like paint companies on the Cape, you know, because I feel like those are the ones that'll really get slammed, when they're, you know, they're painting whole houses, and they have to come in with their bids, you know, this sort of thing is going to affect them. I don't know if the benefit would outweigh the cost. It would be interesting if those folks are out there and listening, to hear their opinion on like, would it be worth the ability to dispose of?
Because it seems like they should have their own disposal mechanism for commercial, but I don't know, I've never heard of one, but...
I have a friend who's a painter, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
He lives in Harwich.
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear.
It would be also interesting to see, the collection is voluntary, so Eastham Hardware, ACE here, can become owner, doesn't have to, it's not required. Be interesting to, I'll try and see if I can talk to them.
But would the tax, but they'd still have to add the tax refund?
Yes.
So that's...
Just like the 5 cent refund, they don't have to take back all the redemption.
Right, I think that's what I'm more concerned about than anything.
This is pending legislation at the State House, so it's a statewide thing, right? So we're not asking to do it for Eastham.
Right.
He's just looking for this board's support of the statewide legislation.
Yeah, I just don't know if I want to support it or not.
Right, no, I got you.
Yeah. No, thank you for bringing that up, though, Rich, and bringing our attention to it.
Definitely needs further look at.
Okay.
And then the EV charging stations.
Yeah, so we've got some good experience with the charging stations. I think, you know, they've had a pretty good measure of success, there's some challenges. But back in the day, when we did all this work to get these in place, we put quite a bit of infrastructure, and then I recalled after I typed up this draft memo, that we actually set it up along the backside of the parking lot for future expansion, which we're not talking about right now. But it does, you know, bear the, go to the point here, is if we ever were to expand the program, we want to have all our ducks in a row, including a pricing model, right? Make the program supporting. So we've been successful, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback and gratitude that we have something easily accessible from Route 6 on the way to Province Town, or down Cape, and likewise on the way back. But it does have a cost to us.
About $5,000 a year, looks like?
Well, grand total between the library and here, say, $10,000, $11,000. And so we want to, at a minimum, recover those electrical costs, because electric costs are set to go up on July 1 for the towns on the Cape. And, you know, in the future, perhaps we also consider recovering some additional costs to replace, you know, maintenance and replacement. But at the moment, I think we'll probably be able to get, continue to get some grants when we get to those points, so I'm not too worried about that.
It'll need some sort of upgrade to change the panel on them, because right now, there's no mechanism for paying or...
It's all on an app.
App-based?
And they're all ready to, they're ready to go.
Charge point?
Yeah. You just have to activate the payment service through ChargePoint.
Okay.
And get some stuff back in on the Treasurer's Office.
One of the questions, I mean, looking at what others charge that Jackie hadn't remembered, they're all over the lot. How do we, how'd you get 50 cents a kilowatt hour and then a dollar per session? I mean, I have, I don't own, I own a hybrid, but I don't own a plug-in anything, so I have no idea how long, or how much kilowatts you pull when you go in here and charge up my EV vehicle and...
Well, that's some of the data we'll probably be able to get going forward, because in the last several months, we now have a dashboard through ChargePoint that gives us the number of sessions and how long they've charged for and stuff like that. So that's part of what we've been working on, that's up and running. So I can get you some better data on that, but I had the totals here. So the point of the 50 cents was to cover the cost of electricity plus a little bit. And the point of the dollar was, is going to be a transaction fee through the payment processor, because it's all credit card based, it's not going to have anybody out there collecting cash.
Right, so it's basically, basically the dollar is paying for the payment fee.
Convenience fee.
The finance fee, similar to if you pay your taxes via credit card, there's a...
I, you know, priced it out based on the full, you know, cost recovery of the stations lasting 10 years, needing a new connectors every once in a while, and some maintenance. You know, if we did it on that basis, on a rough calculation, it probably comes in closer to $1.10, if you're intending more of a full cost recovery. So maybe someday we get there, and there's some examples down there of other municipal lots, that they're charging a dollar, $1.50. So I think 50 cents is certainly reasonable, it's a good starting point for us, and then we can adjust it next year based on that experience.
Ah, so the Province Town in Barstow, it's a dollar per hour, that's per kilowatt hour?
It's all per kilowatt hour.
I thought it was, looking at, I thought, oh, you sit there and be plugged in for an hour, and then we're trying, it just didn't make much sense to me.
No, I did the same thing when I read it.
Well, the other thing is, we're a slow charging, you know, we don't have one of these fast chargers.
You've got 240, right?
So, you know, that might be an upgrade in the future on a different grant, but, you know, when people have expressed a lot of gratitude that we have them, on the other hand, they're like, geez, I got to sit here for six hours.
Right.
Yeah, no, no, it's great that Eastham has them. I was just trying to under, the fees seem to be all over the lot, but now that you've explained that the per hour is per kilowatt hour, and those two, I'm sorry to have caused some confusion here.
All right, so that'll be on our next agenda, too.
That's the next meeting, not now? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to talk, get some more info on the, on the data, and I want, you know, we want people to see it on the agenda coming up, so if they have questions or comments. All right.
I got it free today, and there could be some interesting comments.
Right. All right, new and upcoming agenda items? Anyone have anything they want to follow up on, or haven't seen something followed up on recently? All right. Minutes. They are there? Oh, let's wait, I didn't, I didn't look at them. Because I didn't see any on the agenda, so I didn't look. It just says, discussion and vote may be taken, there's no date. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I was looking for the date.
I'd look for it.
Sorry. All right, so we'll save minutes till next time. Other business, correspondence? Anybody? Sure, come on up.
I'm Sarah Higgins. I ran for the Eastham Elementary School Board, and Elaine Lipton, who did win, I don't know what the proper terminology is, but she didn't accept her win, so I'm going to be, so I need to be appointed by the Select Board. So I see that it wasn't on the agenda tonight, I was talking to Ann Crozier about it, but could I, so I just want to make sure that...
It's on our next agenda, we'll put it on our next agenda.
It usually comes through the clerk's office. Yeah.
We can, yeah, and at the, meet the candidates tonight, I think you heard also, Amy, that the person who decided to not accept the seat had highly recommended you for the position, had preferred folks to vote for you, and actually had it read at the meeting, but I don't think everybody heard the message.
Yeah, if 41 people had heard it, then I would be here.
So I would be all for getting that on the next agenda and moving that forward.
We'll definitely do that.
Well, I think, I read a note that the, the Elementary School Committee is asked as well, supports.
Yes.
Yes, so, yes.
Lots of people want her there.
Ann Crozier should reach out, but that's why I was here, so.
Yeah, like we said, it usually comes through the clerk to give us the...
Right, I should have, I thought I was going to be on the agenda, I didn't check it, but I just wanted to stay and make sure that...
Thank you for doing that.
Got on it the next time.
Right, and the appointment, if it happens, would only be until the next election cycle. It would not be for a full term.